Mr. Mayor, in the interest of time, I can speak to the podium.
Go ahead. We're on. They're here. They're here. They just came on.
Your guide. The comment I was going to make was in to explain the other side of the coin. And by that, I mean, I was asked a question about what happens if there's a stipulation. If there's not a stipulation, the petition goes forward if the employee is not something the city has a say in. There and there's been actually the burden would be. It's under the Iowa code, and the key factors that would have to be that would be considered by the ALJ, the Administrative Law Judge, in deciding whether or not to approve the petition for merger would be these: the principles of efficient administration of government, the existence of a community of interest among public employees, the history and extent of public employee organization, geographical location, and the recommendations of the parties involved. That's the standard that applies. How it would pan out at this point? I can't predict that. But that's the fight, if you will, the city would be engaging in at that hearing. We know what the standard is. We know it's not often been contested. What is interesting is the cases that address it. And in this context, typically, and I haven't done an exhaustive review of every perb decision, but the ones that I did look at, it was the city arguing for one unit and the employee organizations arguing for multiple. So anecdotal perhaps, but an interesting observation. But that's the actual standard to argue and use to say there should not be a merger. So I wanted to make sure that the council had the full understanding of what that involved.
Terry Broxner, I want to remind the city employees then that we got less than a 3% margin of error in our cash reserve balance. And if they continue to negotiate higher and higher benefits and salaries, what happens is with no money and no more taxing ability, you have staff reductions. So as a council, you should...
Any other comments or questions? Preston, come forward, please.
I'm not going to argue any of those points. Those are all very good questions. One of the things that I am a former law enforcement officer. My local is just up the road here in Sibley, the Osceola County Sheriff's Office. I've had some folks saying to me, well, why wouldn't you be in favor of the law enforcement folks? And my answer to that is easy. I said, the folks that we have out there that are keeping the streets, you know, clean and and the streets plowed, those are the folks that allow us to get to the locations where we have to do what we have to do. I can't tell you the exact statistics, but I know that Marv will probably be able to look those up. But there are more people serve of, say, street or road maintenance deaths every year on the job than there are law enforcement officers that lose their life on the job. Injuries are the same numbers. It's not even close. Those folks are out there putting their lives on the line. It may not seem like that, but, you know, the statistics don't lie. Those numbers are real. The other thing to think about is the fact that your water waste, water treatment folks are the ones that make sure that, you know, your sewage is handled in a set you drink and use for bathing is clean and free from any type of harmful substance. That also accounts for public safety. You know, I'm not going to argue what the motivations were with the legislature making this decision. But I will say that when one group... But I will say that when one group is allowed to maintain the majority of their rights, while another group in the same employer has most of their rights taken away, the question of morale is pretty self-explanatory. These folks here, they once had what these folks had. And when you have that kind of, and I deal with that all the time. If I had my way, okay, I would turn the clock back, and these two groups would have been organized as one to begin with. They weren't organized at the same time. The police department organized first, and they they come to us. They came to us with a request for representation. Okay? And then a few years later, the Public Works did the same thing. Public Works was entertained, declined. Okay? When the two came, when the when the Public Works came to be interested, they too approached us about creating a bargaining unit. And the only thing, the only explanation that I was given as to why some of these groups out here were organized separately essentially was that there was a view of those folks that do my job, that the number of groups that you represent had some magical value. And I said, "I, to me, there isn't a group out here that's any more or less important than any other group. There isn't a member out here that's more or less important than any other member. And the number of folks that I represent is is not a concern." It's not about the numbers. It's essentially about, you know, keeping things moving and keeping these folks, you know, in a in an equitable situation. All of this costs money. There's no doubt about it. If I were a private sector union representative, and I and I will never, when things are great for General Motors and the UAW goes in and negotiates a contract, they're going to look at revenues and profits. Okay? And they're going to want their share. And they have the ability to shut the plant down in the form of a strike. Okay? I don't believe in that. I don't believe that benefits anyone. That that option does not, does not, is not provided for in the state of Iowa. Anybody, any group down or a strike, per se, an organized call-in sick day, there are some severe consequences, including sizable fines and jail time for folks that participate in those activities. And we understand. We also read the newspapers. We are constantly monitoring the legislature. We understand that this property tax bill is going to have a large effect on us, just like it does on the communities where we have a presence. And we're not out here to increase the size of the pie. We're out here to figure out how to take what's there and make that work for best for our folks. So, you know, it's it's not like UAW. You know, we're not looking at the profits and loss and saying, "Okay." And it says that in the law. The ability to pay is not a factor in negotiations. Okay? And like I said, I can tell you, I represent the Youth Emergency Services Center in Cherokee. And this is a place that is always strapped. Their budget is always strapped. It's supported by 10 counties.
He's chairing the meeting.
Anyway, to wrap this up, I apologize.
I'm not a behind-the-scenes reader. I doubt if you are.
Anyway, we go in there knowing that if we take these folks to arbitration, we close that place down. And that if we hold out for, you know, an unrealistic amount for a wage increase, that we're going to close the place down. That doesn't help anybody. I live here. I grew up here. I'm from here. I value these towns. We do a lot of shopping here. I bought several cars from Ken Carr and Ron Dranko. And Sheldon is important to us. We shop at Fairway. And, you know, this is a nice town for us to go, you know, if you don't want to shop at Walmart. So we're not evil.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So based on the discussions, if you choose to move forward on this, here would be the recommended motion. Motion to approve the stipulation contingent on city attorney review of the updated stipulation forms with the understanding that the merger itself would be contingent on successful retention and recertification elections, given the timing of those elections. That would be the recommended motion. Based in part on Micah's advice.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
With this, we're basically giving it back to the union to vote on it. If I'm understanding everything correctly.
That's basically what's happening, right? Yes.
And there's no structure here where the vote could happen first before we have to make, before we have to provide action?
If, as previously explained, the organizations ultimately choose if and when to file the petition. The city council doesn't have control over that. So if you don't provide a stipulation and they want to file their petition, they certainly can, and it'll be set for a contested hearing.
But the retention and recertification elections are happening in October, no matter what.
Sure.
For two units.
Any other comments? We have a recommendation for a motion. Does anyone care to move that forward? Hearing, no motion. We take no action.
Micah, what's the next step?
What's the next step?
Doesn't come back.
I think that's to... Preston, in his folks, to talk to you.
All right. Moving forward then, onto new business. We have an engagement agreement for an urban revitalization plan. Would you like to explain a little more about that, please, Sam?
I would. And so because of the terminology, urban revitalization plans seem similar to urban renewal or tax increment financing. They're fundamentally two different things. Urban revitalization plans are an excellent tool to encourage renovation and rebuilding on older lots which may not otherwise be developed. Sheldon has many older homes and rentals. We also have a need for more multifamily housing. The process for applicants, and here's how it works. It's where a urban renewal plan is a rebate through a project plan, and it involves a larger area. Urban revitalization is for a single piece of property. And, you know, I have been asked by multiple people, what are we, what are we doing for the old, for for people in Sheldon to encourage investment in their own, in their own property? And this, and this achieves that goal. It's based on conversations with a number of citizens and council members. And this is a proven recipe for encouraging revitalization in older areas of town. As all of you know, we've really been stepping up our efforts to, and the police department has been a big help with this, to help clean up some of the older areas of town just within the last several months. We've removed dozens of cars, almost all voluntarily, from front lawns and being parked on the grass. We've addressed a number of abandoned properties. We're in the process of addressing four more right now. And and I'm a, I'm a fan of urban revitalization because I've seen it work. In my prior community in Cherokee, we copied the plan after Rock Rapids, and I had a visit with Jordan Cordall, who's still the city administrator there. They had not had a new apartment building in Rock Rapids since, I believe, the late 80s. And when this went into place in Rock Rapids in 2014, within a few years, they had a 10 pla, within the last eight years, they had a 10-plex and a 5-plex within a few, a few years. And so there's real benefits in in doing this. Here's what you need to know is, is that this is incompatible with tax increment financing. So if you put urban revitalization in place, you cannot do a TIF where you have an urban revitalization area. There are exceptions. They're very rare. So the only area in Sheldon, it's still a fairly large area, but it's much smaller than the area that's in TIF. The only area in Sheldon where you could do urban revitalization plan is basically starting at Fourth Avenue down to Washington and then parts of of Ninth Street all the way to to the end. So it's a kind of a tadpole shape in the middle of, in the middle of town. And there's a, a map in the report. It didn't print very well in black and white, but it's in color in the email that I sent out. This is an engagement agreement. This is the very beginning of the process. And we would then come forward for a set of public hearings and inappropriate notices to move the process forward. Once it's in place, I'll give an example. Let's say someone buys a, a house for $10,000, and they put $75,000 of taxable valuation into the house. So they now have an $85,000 house. The additional taxation on the $75,000 improvement, you do not pay that for five full years. So the limit, the limit, though, on a single-family residence is $75,000 in increased valuation. And not all valuation increases, not all investment is the same. Putting a new roof on gets you a lot less in valuation increase than, let's say, putting in a new kitchen. Okay? So it's ultimately the county assessor that determines the value that's being added. The real encouragement, well, the additional encouragement comes for development of multifamily residents, and this is where it's really big. And that is, is let's say you buy a piece of property for $10,000. You tear down the house, and you put up a, you know, considering zoning and all of that, and you put up a 10-plex. And let's say you put $1 million into this property. The taxes on that, on that million, on that entire building are, you do not, you pay the, the 10,000 in valuation, you don't pay any additional taxes for 10 full years, no cap and no sliding scale. And that's your investment in bringing in apartment, you know, bringing in apartments. So it, it's, some, some people have called it like a mini TIF that, that benefits, you know, one, one person, and it, and it's a, or one property owner. And it's, it's a good way for someone that wants to invest in their property to have a easy way to come forward and seek a tax benefit without going through the whole tax increment financing process.
So you've been, you like, you've been using as an example about apartment complexes. It's not necessarily the intent of revitalization in the area that you just outlined for Sheldon. So more than likely, it would be the single homeowner, property owner...
More likely.
...who's going to benefit from this. It's not a direction by us to promote apartment buildings.
No, there are...
In the center of Sheldon.
You're correct. There are, there are a number of existing...
I want to make sure that's clear because sometimes the example steers the...
Sure.
And zoning would still apply.
And zoning still applies. So...
And there are existing apartment buildings, but if you would renovate them, that they would benefit from this.
This would be a way to help this citizen of Sheldon, help improve his property and his living conditions.
It's an individual benefit.
In a way that would allow him to do that with some savings. Correct?
And it's a...
I think that message is more important than apartment buildings, that type of deal. So...
In a nutshell, it's a stimulus to improve some of those older areas of town that would otherwise probably go unimproved.
I personally think that that's a forward-thinking way for our city to start looking. Whether or not it's specific, all the specifics are outlined right now or not, but I think we really need to look at it and talk about it a lot and decide just how that will have benefits or not. So I guess I would like to move this into some type of workshop-type environment, a way where we can talk broader, more openly. Because there's areas of this I still don't understand. And I want to understand because, I mean, before we go ahead and spend money to do this or that or the other, I'd rather just get together and allow the citizens to come and talk and hear about it as well, so we have a full and complete understanding. That's where my thoughts are at.
Looking at the area outlined here, a lot of downtown, there's a significant number of rental properties that are outlined in this particular area. Would this affect someone who is owning real estate for profit differently than anybody else? Or is it just a means of beautification, no matter what your purpose of, of this, the particular property is for?
It'd benefit both. The general rule of thumb is you have to increase the value of the property by more than 10% in order to be eligible for it.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Sam, the question on the table is the engagement agreement. Do you know, was Allers and Cooney expecting to move forward immediately upon approval? Or could this be approved, and then they would move forward pending further instruction?
I believe we could do it that way.
Terry, you have a comment?
Yeah, the engagement agreement, I'm sorry if I might...
No, go ahead.
I just had a clarification, Sam. Initially, when you started, you said $75,000 was the individual limit? And then you went into a million-dollar project?
If you have single family versus three units and more.
And who, who monitors the qualifications and takes care of the applications?
The applications are, are handled by the, approved by the city council.
Individually.
Individually.
And then who follows up and checks to see whether things are being done as agreed?
It's a, the form then goes to the county assessor. The county assessor determines how much value has been added. And that's what's used as the basis.
Is there a timeline on all that, too, or not?
There is.
It doesn't involve...
It varies, and I can find that out for you.
I'm assuming you would do that later, but is there, is there a requirement to get any more city employees to monitor this program?
No.
Thank you.
And I would disclose that, Terry, if there was.
What were you going to say prior to that? Were you going to say something, make a comment?
I forgot.
I just think it's another tool to have in our toolbox for, you know, if somebody buys a property and invest, to improve the, the...
Right.
Property, houses in Sheldon.
It incentivizes development.
Yep. It's no different than giving the lots away.
Yep.
Well, I know what it was.
To build a house.
Is the, the agreement is not for... Is it, is the, the agreement is not for, just to, to spend $5,000. It's, it's ba- ba- it's, it, that's the budgeted amount, but it is, it's based on an hour, hourly rate by Ayers Cooney, which is the expert in, in doing this. So, so Tom, to your point, we could approve the engagement agreement and then, and then have the workshop as part of the process.
Yeah, I think the, the workshop is an important part that I'd like to see added to the process. This, this is a new thing-
It is.
-for the city. And, and I think it's fair to, to the citizens and us as council as well to really fully understand just how this will look and how it'll act and how it'll best provide opportunity for the city. So, I don't want to rush this by any means. I, and I want a full and clear understanding as we move through the process, so there is, we can cut down on the misunderstandings of it. And a lot of times slowing it down helps with that, so.
Just want to make a comment too. I mean, we do currently have two urban renewal areas, revitalization areas in town, and both have been utilized for new development projects. Sam alluded to, what makes this a little bit different now by some of the existing stock that we have in town, is that lets that, those, those housing stock units or whatever, their businesses or whatever, it is redeveloped. Where currently, all of our urban revitalization areas are new developed areas, are green, green space, where there's no development on it. So like the Eagle Construction Project, for example, a couple of years ago, we had considered a multi, our urban revitalization application for a 10-year abatement. And without that incentive, that project would not have happened. Justin Jonas, for example, put up an eightplex in Trilogy without the abatement or revitalization area in place, that doesn't happen. So not only does this spur new development, but it redevelops our community, which I think is the most important thing. We don't want to lose sight on that, so.
And I think there's why I don't want a misconception-
Correct.
-happening here. It's because everything they've seen so far has been for new green space development.
Correct, exactly.
And, and what we really want to start to talk about as a city, and we've already heard a little bit about it during the franchise discussion, is, is that we have things in our town that we need to address. And it's streets and it's, and it's properties and stuff like this. This is, I think, has a real opportunity to be a good tool for that, based upon your, but I don't want it to be confused-
Correct.
... between green space and-
But I just wanted, I wanted just to piggyback maybe on Sam's comment and then your clarification on it, because in the perfect world, it is utilized effectively in, in itself.
Yeah, I'm real excited about hearing about how that, we can clearly communicate that and let people understand that, so, thank you.
Ah, bingo. If, if you take four houses out of one of those streets, tear them down, say today they generate, say $16,000 in property taxes, you tear them down and then that's gone, right? The property taxes are gone there, except for the lot. But you're building something, and there's an abatement on that for what, 10 years? That, that, before that's-
Five years, Bob, if it's single-family.
Okay, even five years. But, but whatever you're doing there, that during that period of time, from the time you port, there's, say, 16, $20,000 of taxpayers that just, tax dollars that just got torn down. So that's got to be made up someplace. So do the rest of the taxpayers have to-
It doesn't go back, it doesn't go to zero. You're locked in at the value that it, that you had at the time you submitted for the urban revitalization development. So in order to, so if you have, have four pieces of property worth, for example, and you would, you'd submit it-
So this is operating different than like TIF?
Oh, yeah. This, this require, this requires a, a simple two-page form for each property. And it's a, and each form comes to the city council for approval. Once, once it, it's, people are used to it, and then it can be a consent calendar item. But until a community is used to how it works, each application is considered by the city, city council.
So the assess, so if I tore down a house, that assessment value stays with that, even though the house is gone?
The initial value stay with the purchase price?
Well, it depends when the reassessment occurs. You know, if you, if you buy, if you, if you have a $15,000 piece of property with an old house on it, then $15,000 is what, is what the value is that's submitted as part of the urban revitalization plan. So you put in an additional $75,000 in improvement, and now you have a total of a $90,000 property, you're still getting the taxes, although not much, you're still getting the taxes on the 15, on the 75, for five, four years.
So in here, I think, let me see if I can, I guess I think I know where you're kind of going with this. If you have, okay, so say I go out there and I buy two pieces of property, each valued at $60,000, bulldoze them and then start with building my multifamily unit. Is that assessment based upon the, the value that, that was purchased at with homes and domiciles included?
That's a qualified yes, but if you knocked it down and then you waited for a next round of assessments and convinced the county assessor to knock down the value of the property because it's a vacant lot, then you could probably game the system, you know, similar to what you described.
Well, I, I think, considering, considering the fact that finances are of a big concern here, and the debt is, you know, and the taxpayers are concerned, and I think this thing should come into play in the thoughts on all of this. And I'd like to have everybody to think about that a little bit. And if somebody's got a good explanation why this is not going to drain the taxes down somewhat for a period of time, but that money is still needed.
I think the flip side is, pardon me-
Go ahead.
The flip side, or the question is, if there's never an incentive to improve, will the tax values ever go up or will they just continue to go down, 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 down? And that's why I think Mr. Eggers is wanting to have a workshop so you can talk through all these and figure out what makes the most sense.
Yeah. I, I think there's going to be several different visions of value or no va- or not value of, of what we're proposing. And, and the more we can get those aired out early, the better we can all address that. The, my vision is, is that nothing gets tore down, that the buildings that are there can be rehabilitated and become good properties for people to improve their lives and stuff like that, and that the city can help promote to do that. If it's back to just green space development again, then I've got questions of my own about that, so. But I, I don't think we can do that here in this environment, as well as if we have a workshop, you all come back and, and we really talk about all these scenarios, so. Appreciate the questions.
Just a point then to, referring back to Rock Rapids, the tenplex and the fiveplex, the values on those were assessed at $700,000 to $800,000 respectively. And I don't know what was on the property prior to it, but, you know, and, and there may be a, you know, there is a time, time lapse in there, but in, in the long run, it ends up being a good thing for the city, much like the TIF has been a goo- you know, there's a short-term waiting period, but in the long run, development takes place. And therein lies the increase in taxable property.
My concern, you know, my thought is that there's, there's going to be some tax dollars lost. I'm okay with this urban renewal and improving the neighborhoods and stuff like that, but if there's a tight financial situation, then it's going to, that, that period of time-
Right.
-five years or 10 years-
Yep.
-it's going to tighten things down more.
I would encourage you to take a look at Iowa Code Section 404.5 and see if that addresses your question. That's one of the policing mechanisms, if you will, of the program. And it talks about the city assi- or, excuse me, the assessor's role in checking in to see what improvements have been made, if it's met the threshold and things like that. But that would be a good starting point for you and all of us to take a look at as we go forward with the discussion.
What was, what was the?
404.5.
Thank you.
So, Tom, you have indicated how you want to handle this. Are you ready to put that in the form of a motion?
Well, yeah, I mean, I would like to make a motion and we set a date and time for an open workshop to, to discuss this issue, so.
Before we do the engagement agreement?
I guess I'm still trying to understand why we would want, why is the engagement agreement is, would precede that? Maybe you can help me understand that a little better.
Well, because the engagement agreement doesn't lock us to spending, to spending the, the money, the engagement agreement is, is, it's an hourly rate with Ayers and Cooney, I think we can start, we can, we can proceed with the engagement agreement and then have a, a workshop during that, that process, which includes a public hearing. Or we can delay this and, and have an engagement, you know, I can, I can print up more examples, we can take a map and pass it out and explain what areas would be eligible for.
So do you feel the engagement agreement is a valuable tool for the workshop?
Well, you and others may have questions for Ayers that you would want addressed at the workshop.
That's my point. Would they be, would they be a valuable resource for the workshop?
It could be.
If that's the case, then, then I'm fine with that. I just don't want it to be perceived that we're getting ahead of the conversation.
Well, I think, I think to your point then, we would have the, the workshop at the very beginning of the, of the process before Ayers does a lot of work. And I think that fulfills what you're asking.
And, and I would stay with the motion the way I said, to conduct a workshop to discuss urban reva- the urban revitalization plans and processes.
But if I want, if we want Ayers to be part of the workshop-
Then we have to-
Probably would need to proceed with the engagement.
So, so then-
You know what, Tom, we could do it either way. They've done a lot of work with Sheldon over the years, and I'm sure they'd be okay with dialing into a workshop and, before the engagement is, is signed.
I think there's value in having them in, involved with the workshop. And if the only way that we can get that engagement is to initiate this process, then I'm in favor of it. If there's another way, then I'd be in favor of that, so.
This workshop, how long do you anticipate this would last? I mean, we've got one, we're scheduled, going to be scheduled one for September, that's where I'm going with this.
September 4.
Going to be dubbed out there with that, or does it have to be a separate time? Yeah, we could piggyback it on-
We'd probably put it at the end of the next meeting.
In this month, August, okay?
See if Ayers is able to dial in and answer some questions and set up down front, and hopefully it would take no more than a half hour or so.
State your pleasure, someone.
We technically have a motion. I just need clarification whether you want to approve the engagement agreement or not.
I just want clarification that we would include the, you have their names again, what's their names?
Ayers Cooney.
Uh, uh-
Ayers Cooney, yep.
To, to be part of that, to be part of that workshop.
All right, so state the motion then as you have it.
To set a workshop to discuss urban revitalization and include Ayers and Cooney to be part of it.
As a resource for-
All right, we have the motion. We have support for that motion.
Because I have a question, are we approving the contract?
The motion was not approve the contract. And that's okay, because I think, I think Ayers Cooney would be willing to be part, be part of, of that process. I don't think it would take very long. Can't imagine it'd be more than half an hour. Be by phone, so. It wouldn't be a lot of cost on their part, or ours, depending on-
Well, if we're going to be spending the money either way, whether we enter into an agreement or we pay them whatever hourly rate to have a workshop and then proceed with.
I'm going to see if they're willing to dial in as part of the explanation for the agreement.
Gotcha.
At no cost to us. I will see if they'll be willing to do that.
Well, I support the motion as it is right-
Any other questions, Tom? Troy, just stick it together.
All right, roll call please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
All right, next item, resolution approving the agreement with newer pallets for tree dump disposal.
Pretty slow explanatory, I think, so I make the motion to approve.
Second.
And you have the discussion. Roll call please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Okay, then there's an addition to our agenda about setting a date and time for the public hearing on the proposed Jenkinson second addition.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a recommendation to set the date and time of a public hearing on the proposed Jenkinson second addition, which would be a minor subdivision, one lot carved out of another on East Nice, on East Ninth Street. This is a set for hearing for August 21.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Questions, comments, roll call.
Barahona.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
All right, final item under new business is open burning request from Sheldon Livestock.
Yeah, they called me this morning, asked about if they're, they have a hole that they dug that they've put debris in, burnt trees and, and that kind of stuff, and they just want permission to burn it. And I said they had to go through the council, and then he also is aware that he needs to notify the fire department as well, so. So I already entertained the motion to approve that.
Okay, support for that.
Support.
Okay, we got support, roll call please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right. Sam, anything else you'd like to share with us at this point, at this time?
No, sir. My city manager report was very lengthy and it's typed out and speaks for itself.
Okay. Anything from you additional, Kurt? Okay. Council left, any comments?
No.
To the right?
No.
And I have none?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Support. Roll call.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
We are adjourned.